This is a regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the amnest meetings notice of 2015, which was filed in the City Plugs Office and posted on bulletin board on December 23, 2014, and sent to the Star-Lantern and the Home News Tribune in compliance with the open public's meeting clause of New Jersey.
Councillor Costa.
Here.
Councillor Grover.
Councillor Torres.
Here.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councillor Canary.
Here.
Councillor Simeon.
Councillor Walman.
Here.
Councillor Nassan.
Here.
President Perkins-Gustafson.
Here. Is anyone here on the public vision to address City Council? See, closed public portion speaking of a minute, meeting, and move on to the agenda items.
Okay, the first item was presented to council at the last conference, but it was removed from the agenda. It was a letter dated April 7, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting to approve the application and financial agreement with FRG Elizabeth Urban Renewal LLC entity for freezer warehouse and ancillary office located on the vacated Henry Street parcel. It's so, it has been requested to bring this before council for consideration. Again, they removed it the last time.
Who removed it?
Uh, the Law Department.
Oh, okay.
So now...
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you have the, there's also a letter, little explanation and different things like that.
Okay, so everyone can read the letters, and if you have any other questions, please contact Madam City Clerk.
Okay.
Okay, so it's gonna be on.
Okay, definitely. All right. Letter dated April 17, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Office Solutions Inc., Warren, New Jersey, for the purchase of telecommunications equipment wired for various departments for the period April 1, 2015 through March 31, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 17, 2015, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Wireless Communications and Electronics, West Berlin, New Jersey, for the purchase of computers and computer accessories for the Fire Department for the period April 7, 2015, through September 30, 2015, and a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Business Administrator requesting that City Council reject all bids received March 19, 2015, for the furnishing of three 2015 or newer Type I ambulances for the Ambulance Services Bureau of the Fire Department, and authorize the purchasing agent to revive with revised specification.
What happened? We need you so bad.
Yeah, they didn't have the proper paperwork. They didn't have the such requirements of the manufacturer, and they had, one had the wrong manufacturer's name on the bid bond. So unfortunately by, you know, delay it unfortunately two weeks, but we do need...
We need him so bad.
Yeah.
Okay, so how much longer will this take?
Uh, well, it'll delay it two weeks and then from the advertising, so hopefully within about a month.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Put them on.
Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Heritage Fleet Services Inc., Milford, Delaware, for the purchase of one 2015 Dodge Ram 1500 four-wheel-drive crew cab as an addition to the fleet for the total cost of $24,940.80.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to SHI International Somerset, New Jersey, for the renewal of the reverse 911 system, unlimited annual fee for the Police Department for the period June 13, 2015, through June 12, 2015, at a total cost of $36,630.
Okay, any questions?
What's the reverse when I want to know?
It's when we call all the residents in the city to notify them of an emergency.
Okay.
Uh, flooding, snow, any, you know, notifications, and it also allows them to, I apologize, also around, you know, neighborhoods if there's an issue with water or electric or things of that nature. So it allows the Police Department to call the residents.
Like when a little boy was missing or something like that?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Put it on.
Okay. Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Arconic Systems LLC, Marlton, New Jer, Jersey, for the maintenance and quarterly license of the police computer-assisted records management and dispatch system software, ex-mobile clients, ex-cad data export, for the period April 7, 2015, through June 30, 2015, in the amount of $23,720.
Who's about to pass in the house, does anyone?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Is there any questions on what was just read? Um, Bridget, I have to say one question regarding the reverse 911 system.
Yes.
Can we, can that be paid through some type of, I guess, disaster preparedness program?
I can certainly ask.
Okay. Maybe through the state, maybe we can check with our Assemblywoman because I know she has that, um, committee for the state.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for a policy of insurance with James River Insurance Group, Richmond, Virginia, through the agent of record Hughes-Plummer Associates, covering professional liability for the engineering staff for the period May 10, 2015, to May 10, 2016, at a manual premium of $38,787.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with T&amp;M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, for professional on-call traffic engineering services for the City of Elizabeth for the period April 10, 2015, through April 9, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $45,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Klein Traffic Consulting LLC, West Orange, New Jersey, for professional on-call traffic engineering services for the City of Elizabeth for the period April 10, 2015, through April 9, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
I re, we had a request for qualification that we received too, and I reduced the T&amp;M contract by $10,000, what we've done last year in the event that for conflict purposes, if they're too busy, and Lee Klein actually used to work for T&amp;M, and he was our project manager about three years ago, and he left and opened his own firm. So the pricing fairly comparable, Lee Klein was a little less, but I thought it would be an opportunity to just protect us to, and again, they're open-ended, so it's not necessarily going to spend them all, but thought it would be advantageous for us to have more than one.
No, I don't have a phone, I think it's good, but what do you mean by, what do you mean by on-call traffic?
These are when we, whenever council or anyone asks to see if there's a stop sign at this intersection, or a right-of-way, or changing ERICO from a one-way, or from a two-way to a one-way, whenever the, with that two, we ask for, we always go through traffic, and again, T&amp;M's had the contract for a long time, and they've done a decent job, but Mr. Klein had worked with them, and I just thought from a competitive standpoint, we could save some money.
That's fine, okay. Any other questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 13, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to issuing appropriate due-for-fee tax sales certificate to Stone Field Investment Fund III LLC, Munsey, New York, covering a lost or otherwise misplaced original tax sales certificate.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2015 state fiscal year budget-by-budget amendments, Chapter 159.
Any questions?
If I'd like to go back to the on-call traffic engineer, I know, I guess this is a new contract, but it just threw me off when you just mentioned ERICO from a two to a one-way.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't requested anything like that.
Uh, there was, I saw a report from T&amp;M Associates recently that there was, that there was investigation done to make ERICO a one-way from a two-way.
Initiated by who?
I do not know. I have a call-in to Lieutenant Marcus actually to discuss it.
I don't know nothing about it.
Okay.
I haven't requested it.
Oh, that's interesting.
I don't know if somebody on council has requested it.
No, no.
Anybody on council? At large?
No.
I'll follow up. I mean, I received the report late last week, and I...
Where's it coming from?
Okay, I'll find out and get, call you in the morning and let you know. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I'll be the guy from the first word, dude.
You're gonna be the add-ons?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with State Fiscal Year 2015 Appropriations Act requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting to amend the resolution adopted July 22, 2014, awarding a contract to Powell Capital Markets Inc. to provide financial advisory services for an amount not to exceed $40,000, specifically to reflect an additional $30,000 for providing additional financial advisory services resulting from the most recent financing of approximately $50 million in bond ordinances, thereby raising the amount of the contract to $70,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting to amend the resolution adopted July 22, 2014, awarding a contract to Decadas Fitzpatrick &amp; Cole LLP to provide bond counsel services for an amount not to exceed $60,000, specifically to reflect an additional $100,000 for providing additional bond attorney advisory services resulting from the most recent financing of approximately $50 million in bond ordinances, thereby raising the amount of the contract to $160,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a capital ordinance for the acquisition of various equipment for the Public Works Department in the amount of $1 million.
Okay, any questions? Can we just get a list of what they've gone through in my view?
Sure thing.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing the acquisition of the property located at 333, what is that, 33328? Maybe you should be going...
Yeah, it's going backwards.
Atlantic Street, in the amount of $1,800,000 with a down payment of $90,000.
Any questions? Can we just check the address?
Yeah.
Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing improvements to Jackson Park in the amount of $2 million with a down payment of $100,000.
First word's for the business. Any questions?
Trying to keep up with the six.
I was gonna say the thing. I would be, I would hold my beans. I would go make a company, but I left them all.
You got a couple more opportunities.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing improvements to Penop Park in the amount of $600,000 with a down payment of $130,000.
I was gonna say the thing.
Any questions?
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing the construction of the Miller and Legan Spray Park in the amount of $3 million with a down payment of $150,000.
Not much, I don't know. It's not much. Hey, hey.
What's that on the receiver?
What I tell you, you better come and come from here.
Okay, letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing the construction of a salt storage facility on city-owned property located at 30338 Atlantic Street in the amount of $3 million with a down payment of $150,000.
Do you not have any salt storage facility?
We don't have a facility currently?
We have a small one that, as a result of its minimal capacity, kind of forced us into some of the situations we were this past winter of not being able to fill it up at the beginning and sort of fighting for our supply of salt out of the port. Works Director made a request that we would be able to build an extremely large one, and we would only need to fill once a year and have enough supply for the season.
First word again? No, I think that's actually smart. Last year, you know, I mean, well, this past winter, we had issues with our tractors waiting in line to receive salt from the company, so I said we have it.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, in the, in the event, as Councillor Torres said exactly, we, there had been a management decision to send our trucks to wait in line to get salt as opposed to waiting for a delivery, which helped us, but at the same time, if we have trucks in line at the port, they're not on the street spreading salt, so this would also eliminate and keep the, the folks on the road clearing and not spending time.
Okay, so I'm assuming that we weigh the economic cost. I'm assuming that was taken into consideration.
Yes, from timing and personnel and have, yes, and long-term investment.
Okay, because if you don't use it for salt, we can use it for something else, right?
I don't think you'd use something else.
I could look into that, I'm not certain what other purpose it serves.
No, you can.
But we can see, I can certainly answer any question.
Thank you. I'd have to have a multipurpose use. Okay, put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing the resurfacing of various roads in the amount of $5 million with a down payment of $250,000.
Any questions?
Can we get the, the names of the streets that are gonna be paid?
Please, yes.
Oh, absolutely, yes, this is, yes, without a doubt, this is the, you know, the request for the bond ordinance to get the money, but as we go to spend it, the plan, and also sooner than death too as well.
Actually, can we give you streets?
Without a doubt, yes, yes, we would certainly, like streets.
Can we go to the miracle water, like first ward?
But yes, but certainly get the, approach the street and idea of what the overall plan is.
Go past Phil Ward?
Yes, the ones that are in worship should go first, as long as they're not counting state.
Second, the first would cost us more.
I wonder why?
You have a Phil Ward always first, guy, you gotta do it better.
Second, there, right?
Seven, the second.
I turned listen over.
Letter dated April 7, 2015, from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply acceptance, sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation's Youth Core Urban Gateway Enhancement Program. Anticipated funding will provide opportunities for young people to revitalize gateways via cleanup, litter removal, and beautification efforts for an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 9, 2015, from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting authorization to enter into an Eighth Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Elizabeth Department of Health and Human Services and New Jersey Medical School Global Tuberculosis Institute at Rutgers Biomedical and Health Sciences to provide diagnosis, treatment, monitoring, case management, and field services for residents of Elizabeth with confirmed or suspect tuberculosis disease for the period January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $50,684.
Any questions?
Question, and don't we have another program with the Health Department where other municipalities come here for this kind of stuff, right?
Uh, that has to do with the STDs. This is specifically, but I can verify, this is tuberculosis, which I think is the Elizabeth residents, as opposed to, we are receiving municipality for the County of Union for the STD clinics.
Depends, just the Dallas.
I believe, but I'll confirm that.
Yeah, but I thought it was a couple different, I thought it was TB also, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, TB also, P. D. Center.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, so, 'cause then we're receiving from other municipalities here, but we're sending our residents someplace else, and I don't know, I'm trying to understand.
No, 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 this would be administered on our site.
On our site?
Yes.
Just for city residents?
I will confirm that. I'll confirm where the, where the services are administered and to whom is receiving service.
President?
Yes.
Can we go back to the Youth Core?
Midroney County residents, by the way.
Wait, you can.
So is it a back page or is there a breakdown?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, back page.
'Cause on the cover page it says field services for Elizabeth, residents of Elizabeth, but doesn't say whole county will be eight percent.
Not present. Get it.
Just clarify, please.
I will, because it does say in the, in the second paragraph under the agreement, "The agency will provide for diagnosis, treatment, monitoring, nurse case management, and field services for residents of the municipalities covered by the City of Elizabeth Health jurisdiction with confirmed or suspected tuberculosis diseases, their associated contacts Class 81." So we're the agency, but it's with our, within our jurisdiction, which is the remaining towns in the county.
Okay, you know, yeah.
I just want to go, I just want to go back to the, to the Youth Core program. Do we not have any kids we talk about, what time, how long the program is, if it's just a summer?
It's a summer program, and it would depend on how much money we receive. We're requesting $200,000, which I think is the maximum amount any one municipality can request, but I will find out how many folks that they anticipate hiring.
And age?
Age and, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Madam.
Which Asian length of service?
Johnny, does?
Yeah.
And where do we send the kids to?
Well, we gotta get the money.
We gotta get the money. We gotta get the money.
But once we get the money, I will let you know, that is out.
Thank you, that'll be good.
Yeah. Going to be, you'll need to body off the phone.
Letter dated April 15, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide a rental program deferred payment loan to McGill Real Estate Holdings LLC for the property located at 620 West Jersey Street for rehabilitation of one unit in the vacant six-unit building in the amount of $60,000.
Okay, put it on, any questions?
Letter dated April 17, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution adopted, it was adopted December 9, 2014, awarding CDBG funds to Elizabeth Port Presbyterian Center in the amount of $12,000, specifically to hire a CPA firm to prepare the agency's past two years' audit reports for an additional $15,000, thereby raising the amount to $27,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 17, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution also adopted on December 9, 2014, specifically to use program income for the relocation office to provide rental assistance, emergency stays for fire victims, and for illegal apartments for an additional $50,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution adopted February 10, 2015, with the Cerebral Palsy League Inc. in the amount of $10,000, specifically for an additional $5,000 to cover the prevailing wage cost requirements for the period July 1, 2015, until December 31, 2015.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 21, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide a loan to CIS Oakwood LLC, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, for the property located at 20230 Parker Road for the purpose of bond repayment costs associated with the redevelopment of an affordable housing project formerly known as Oakwood Plaza.
Any questions?
Madam President, I just wanted to ask Bridget, are there any new updates overall when it comes to Oakwood?
Um, I have not had any or asked since the last meeting.
Since the last meeting.
Yes, but I can certainly follow up in...
Okay, great.
Where they are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated April 14, 2015, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Supreme Conditioning Systems Inc., Caslet, New Jersey, for preventive maintenance and emergency repair service for heating, air conditioning, and automatic temperature control systems at various public buildings owned by the city for a period of two years in, in the amount not to exceed $622,150.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 17, 2015, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Alnetta Contractors Inc., Bridge Water, New Jersey, for the on-call contractor sidewalk and drainage improvements at various city parks and city right-of-ways for a one-year period at a cost of $423,960.
Any questions?
Do we just do this? I know Jackson Park was there.
Did we just do this?
Did we just do this?
No, nothing.
No, we had, same thing ratio.
I know Alnetta, he just ripped up all the concrete from, I don't know if it was Carter Red Park, but I know he did Jackson Park.
He did, he did Jefferson Park, obviously.
Yeah, he's on, this is so much an on-call one-year contract.
He did a couple more parks up here, he did some in Killah.
Do we know the parks that he's going to find out?
I can find out for you, I don't know, I believe, um...
Yeah, with this work.
So, my pleasure, you let me put it on?
Yeah, put it on. Put it on, we gotta put that on.
Have a good patience.
We need location.
Yeah, what parks you're planning.
Thank you.
Okay. Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Bismarck, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with the Atlantic Street Storm Water Storage Tank preliminary design and feasibility study on a lump sum and time and material basis at a cost not to exceed $111,000 plus reversal.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 20, 2015, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Nbar Services, North Brunswick, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services in connection with design and construction administration of the Elizabeth River Trail, Phase IV, at a cost not to exceed $315,400.
Any questions?
Bridget, are we doing already some of the study alongside the river? I mean, this is, I know it's a phase four of the six, seven different phases that we're going to have. Are we doing the same thing already with the, alongside the river with a different company because of the storm?
Um, with regards to the river walk or with regards to, with the river walk, yeah, the environmental... The river walk, yeah, the environmental has been done for phases. Well, one's complete, Phase 2 and Phase 3, the environmental's been done. This is to hire them to do the environmental for Phase 4.
4.
But the Phase 2, I believe, we just received approvals from the State Office of Astor Preservation, because while they were excavating, they found a whole bunch of old clay along the river. So, we just, that we were just released. So, we're in the permitting process for that. So, yeah, this is the beginning of the Phase 4. So, yes, that was a long yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Letter dated March 24, 2015 from the Director of Recreation, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the State and New Jersey Department of Education Sponsor Management Plan for the 2015 Summer Food Service Program, which will commence on July 6, 2015, and conclude August 28, 2015.
Any questions? Everyone had their parks included?
Just one question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
There's this second page to it. I don't know if it was added. It says, "No cost to the city." Is that the same paper?
I don't think this one doesn't say yet.
Right, the second one says it.
The second one's character.
That's the problem. Because it does not cost.
Yeah, usually.
Any other questions?
Letter dated March 24, 2015 from the Director of Recreation, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the State and New Jersey with respect to meals for the Summer Food Nutrition Program to commence July 6, 2015, and ending on August 28, 2015 at no cost to the city.
Okay, any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated March 24, 2015 from the Director of Recreation, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the Elizabeth Board of Education for the purpose of providing food vendor services in conjunction with the Summer Food Nutrition Program to commence July 6, 2015 through August 28, 2015 at no cost to the city.
Any questions?
Letter dated April 15, 2015 from the Police Director, requesting to establish handicap parking spaces. Second Ward personalized, 60 Watson Avenue. Sixth Ward, 813 Martin Street personalized.
Hold on, please.
Fifth Ward, 170 Catherine Street. Fourth Ward, 910 Sheridan Avenue. Fifth Ward, 744 Jackson Avenue. Fifth Ward, 460 Jackson Avenue. Deletion, 1120 Hampton Place. Letter dated April... Well, it's an email dated April 14, 2015 from Torcon, Inc., Red Bank, New Jersey, requesting an encroachment permit for the placement of temporary construction trailers within the right-of-way of Kloski Street for the construction of a new 140,000-square-foot elementary school at 477 Richmond Street.
Yeah, that's fine, that's for the new school. Yeah, it's okay.
Letter dated April 2, 2015 from the State and New Jersey Department of Transportation, requesting a resolution of support from your honorable body supporting the use of a no-passing zone along Route New Jersey 27 in the City of Elizabeth County of Union.
Which street is that?
Rowway.
What is it, gotta tell them?
No-passing zone.
You mean, I can't go around if you go? Mom, we're gonna do that. That's your word. Who says that?
The state. It's always been this way.
Right.
Read the letter. Read the letter. Center line markings, little night change.
They're there.
Okay.
Okay. Letter dated April 17, 2015 from the Franco-Mazza Civic Association, Elizabeth, requesting permission to conduct the annual San Vito procession and feast on July 23 through July 26, 2015 on West Avenue from 6:30 PM to 10:30 PM, except on Sunday, July 26, festival hours from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM. Setup of vendors and stage on Wednesday, July 22, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM.
Does this company giving back a million dollars each day?
Absolutely.
Oh.
You all invite the company, spend some money.
Okay.
I'll bring my bankies. Free of charge, of course.
Was that coming into the Ward Council?
Yeah, absolutely. Free of charge.
Have any concerns? Have any questions?
Nah, put it on. Let it go break.
Letter dated April 20, 2015 from Bill Lavin, founder of Angel's Play Foundation, Woodbridge, New Jersey, is requesting that the City of Elizabeth be the first to accept a playground to be placed next to Veterans Park with a direct view of the New York City skyline and the site of the former World Trade Center to honor the memory and personality of the children and educators killed in the Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting. Building of this playground will be taking place the week of May 11 with a ribbon-cutting ceremony to be annexed.
Is that okay, Council?
Absolutely.
Put it on.
Okay. All right, Councilman Torres has requested a handicap parking at 243 Magnolia Avenue be put on. Councilman Questa has requested commendations for the recipient of the 2015 Elizabeth Promise Awards. And Councilman Gonzalez has requested commendation for Ms. Kylie Walsh, the drama coach retiring from Elizabeth. Okay, letter dated April 20, 2015 from the City Treasurer, submitting the treasurer's report of receipts and dispersments for the month of November 2014, a statement of balances and investments as of November 30, 2014. Next letter is from the Fair Rental Housing Board, their minutes of February 18, 2015. Also in your package, you have a letter from the Director of Planning and Community Development explaining and responding to the first source agreement for Toronto Street Supermarket Development. And then also, does anybody have a copy? Yeah, I made a copy and filed it. You have a copy of the petition from Blue Z. Oh. We have one on one item. And also, Councilman Gonzalez is requesting to place on the agenda a proclamation in anticipation of Municipal Clerks Week, May 3 to the 9, 2015.
I thought it only appropriate to acknowledge the great work that the city clerk at her office does, not only for council, but for the city. I mean, they really are... There was a lot of people go to the city clerk's office to get information, and it really help a lot of residents here in the city. So, just a small token to say thank you. It's all the work that they do.
Thanks for leaving your package.
Motion to go on to close session.
Okay. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, the L. 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, minutes will be kept, and once deemed matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting. Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Stellania?
Aye.
Councilman Gorman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins to dust.
Okay, once around, Charles?
I just wonder, when is the waterfront gonna be open?
I'll find out.
Canary?
I have multiple complaints about CSX property that transverses West Philly Avenue and West Grant Street, the homeless under the Chilton Street Bridge, as well as Cherry Street Bridge. Some of the problems come from, as far as the legal dumping, the people that live in the garden apartments along West Philly Avenue, that they throw it onto the tracks. But there are other problems specifically on the Chilton Street Bridge. To the left, I can get the address. And to the right, they're complaining about the homeless as well as the overgrown trees that lean on the houses.
So, we'll have someone to come here.
Yep, we will reach out. I'll speak to the Director of Public Works and the Police Director to reach out to CSX, because I do know periodically coordination is necessary to go in and clean that up and get that done and get you back states.
I understand that we have to... We can't go on their property, they throw us off. But because of the homeless under their bridges, it is becoming a health problem now that the weather is changing. Director Petting and I were up there last spring. So, I just want to get it...
The irony is, we're not all on the property, but there are people living there.
Can we suggest some Earth Day? If they can have approved, maybe they can make a friendly suggestion to get them to move and do it on Earth Day, which is next week.
I will ask, but I believe that we need CSX approval.
See what I mean?
Yes, hopefully we can get it before then, yes.
Yeah, because that's just so we could wind up.
Madam President, if the conditions are the same as last spring, it's not conducive to have people go downstairs, down onto the tracks. It's the spillwater.
They're people, even if they're ready. Yeah. To add something to volunteer, yeah. Is there anything else? Bill?
No, pass.
Frank?
Pass.
Frank?
I don't have anything.
Nelson?
Pass?